Good evening, everyone. I stand with the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Today is January twenty-seventh, at time of six P.M. The special meeting of the New Directions Council is called to an end. At this time, we also have phones, papers, any other required places. Silence, please. First, on one basis, this time we're going to announce the number. It's one of your requests for the year two thousand and eleven roll call.
Eric.
Here.
Here.
Jamie.
Here.
Darryl.
Here.
Helen.
Here.
What we're going to do tonight, we're going to sort through what's been applied for, must've been presented to the council. And you can make your statements, and council has some questions. And the decision will be made, announced at the February council meeting, February the sixth. And we'll go in alphabetical order, with the exception of one. New Directions is having a meeting immediately after they make the presentation. That was my copy of the order. So representative of New Directions, like to come to the podium, please.
Good evening.
Thank you, first of all, for allowing us to present our request this evening.
I have our new executive director of New Directions, Diane Moore. She has had a deal of new material. She is newly hired. I have a board member and secretary, Martha Waits. And I am Rob Snuff, Vice President. We're requesting funds to continue providing a service to the community. Will, the three of us, will share some things with you this evening. One thing that I want to start out with is our goal. Basically, our goal with New Directions is to provide services to the community. And it's extremely important that what we, you know, that we do provide things for our community, and then we keep them local, and have a variety of things for, you know, for our families within this community. Some of the community resources that I want to discuss, one thing is Heather's Law. And on the board, we've added several new board members this year, and we've made many new changes. And in that process, we've added a variety of people that come with a lot of different interests. And Heather's Law is an area that has a huge interest by many of us on the board, me as an educator and a board member for New Directions, and as well as the community. And I know in your package, you have some letters that are on our behalf that are requesting the same things. So I know Mr. Hunter had also had some thoughts on this, and at this time, I'd like to ask him to share some thoughts on Heather's Law, please.
One of our continued goals in the school system is to provide for the needs of our kids and parents with Heather's Law. Some legislation was passed, and there will be a program put into place on working with junior high age kids on date violence. And the New Directions is going to play a key role in providing personnel and curriculum for our junior high in instructing our sixth, seventh, and eighth grade students on a program to help in this area. Also, we mentioned that one of the other things that's very important in terms of schools, we do have kids, families, mothers and children sometimes who leave their home, who've gone to New Directions. And it's very important to us to keep in the community so that the kids' lives aren't more disrupted by going to other communities to be educated. So, you know, it's very important for regional schools for multi, for multiple reasons to try and support New Directions and provide for our school system. I'm glad to answer your question.
I guess I have a question for you, though. In that you say you're going to be putting a program in place. Who's going to be leading or instructing this program that would be licensed to carry this through, other than, you know, the teachers really aren't? I'm not saying they aren't knowledgeable, but as far as knowing-
They actually, they actually are with resources from programs. The program will be provided by New Directions, primarily a curriculum. This is what's-
Okay, so who would be directing that?
When I contacted the administration, New Directions purchased a program called Safe Dates that is nationally recognized, and it is specifically for dating violence awareness. It has several components, and it is geared toward the teachers. It even has lesson plans built into it. And it can be condensed, it can be expounded upon. It's current from January two thousand and ten, so it includes sexting and texting and bullying and all sorts of issues. And that has been given to the schools. And there, I think there are health teachers and the counselors in the schools are associating that.
Counselors in schools rather than anyone from New Directions?
Well, we are, we are available to involve-
But as a social worker who's knowledgeable in that area-
Well, I, I am a licensed social-
But you're on the board, aren't you?
Right.
So that would be, would that be a conflict of interest?
I don't see it as one as far as being able to help if they have any questions specific to New Directions facility or anything like that. But this is geared toward the educational piece for the students, so.
Our new, our new counselor that we hired, our social counselor that we hired with Sir Virginia, she'd be playing a key role in the destruction.
How do you see that play out? What's, when somebody comes to the council of the school and says, hey, somebody's been using my picture and sexting around and all that, how does, where does it go from, once it gets to the guidance counselor? How does it work its way into directions? Or how could it work the way?
Well, it may not, something like that probably isn't going to work its way to directions. What they're doing, providing, it's a, it's a teaching tool to make sure that the kids tell an adult what's going on. And, you know, in that type of situation, they're saying, yeah, sexting or whatever. It's one of the things that kids a lot of times do, and in bullying situations and all that, an adult doesn't even know about it until it's, it's gone to a, you know, a very serious stage. So, you know, one of the things that's part of your whole education process is making an adult aware.
And we're considering it not that we expect somebody to come into the physical shelter via that. Our, that, this is our education outreach awareness and hoping that youngsters who have relationships in a lot younger years than we would like a lot of times, begin to learn what a healthy relationship is, to avoid and prevent the potential of coming into a physical shelter. Whereas our-
But it's, you just presented the materials to, you purchased, or purchased is what I meant. Yes. So you just purchased and just handed it to them, and it's up to the schools to take it from there.
Well, and I sat down with all of the administrative pieces, and if they had questions as to what role we can play to help them, for more than one, to do that. But we didn't want to tell the school how to do their job.
And we also have a subcommittee that we've worked with, with the school corporations, to help get their ideas and get their input on what they want, what direction the school wants to take with us. So what our goal was, was to educate, provide tools and materials so that the schools can take this information on further and, and get these students, get that material in their hands, and get that knowledge to them and their families.
And it would also then help them with the mandate of Heather's Law, because they were mandated to give this for, you know, eighth grade.
And we hope to even expand it down the road. I mean, we're starting with the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, but it's obviously a problem in the older grades, too. And we just thought we would start young right now, because if we can establish good habits and things, a lot of these kids don't know any better because they've grown up in that environment, and they're just routinely changers. And a related statistic that applies to this situation is there's been studies conducted nationally, and one in five female high school students reports being physically and/or sexually abused by a dating partner in today's society. And that report was not a few years ago, so a current study would probably raise that level as well. But one in five female high school students, and that doesn't even address verbal abuse, which is sometimes hard to recover from.
And it's also shown that adults who physically abuse their partners have their first episode of dating violence by age of fifteen, so.
Basically, you're just trying to fight it off, so your job gets-
Exactly. We want to put ourselves out of business at the physical shelter, but we want the education out there to prevent it.
Our goal is to educate and eliminate those. One of the other community resources, and there are several listed on, on information that we provided you, but is our partnership with the local law enforcement, BIP. I know Barbara is working on that, if you can share a little bit of BIP.
It's BIP, standing for Battle Rurs Intervention Program. And part of what we feel is important is not only the education for the youth, but breaking the cycle with the alleged perpetrators as well. When Reverend and Mrs. Split were in our community, they helped facilitate, he helped facilitate a program that was set up at that time where the courts, both of the courts, made referrals from cases that they had brought before them of domestic violence. The Department of Child Services made referrals from expenses from child abuse and neglect situations. And there is availability for self-referral, obviously, those are less. And there were, that was about a year and a half ago. And at that time, I think there were nine that were in that class. I believe three completed it. And if they didn't complete, that would be known to the court, and whether that would then revoke a probation, or, you know, whatever that would do with that. We feel like that that program is important, so we do have a grant that was given to us to help us offset redoing that program. The law changed, and the courts have to make referrals to a certified program. For us to be a certified program, the facilitator has to have more credentials, has to go through different training, has to shadow a six-month program that's already existing. We have to do a certification cost through Indiana's Indian Coalition Against Domestic Violence. So there are lots of, lots of costs with that. We do have, this one young one has the credentials already, so she'd be ready to go after doing the training and the shadowing. And like I say, that's a Battle Rurs Intervention Program for the, for the male part of that. Obviously, our shelter house is women. It's a single-sex situation at this point. Men are often Battle Rurs. It's not to say that it doesn't go vice versa, but it's not set up to have the sexes in the area. Limited class of fifteen. The judges have said they could easily give us at least one a month for referrals. And seventeen cases to the Department of Child Services.
Do you get any money from the state for, for this program at all?
The, the only thing that we had with the BIP was if it was a Department of Child Services referral, they would pay part of the costs for the fact that they were referring someone. The monies that the alleged perpetrators, when they come into the program, they have to have a book and all of this kind of stuff. And so there are, it can be up to seventy-five dollars of an administrative fee that they should pay. And then it's fifteen dollars for each session they attend. The tweaking that we think we need to do is that if they didn't show up, we didn't have their fifteen dollars. And if at the end of the course, three out of the nine were finishing, they would've paid. Then it was going to be up to the court to make sure that they paid what they, you know, were supposed to from court orders. So sometimes that bogs that. But other than that, we only save some.
Are you listed with the state as a domestic shelter?
We are a partner with the Indiana Coalition Against Domestic Violence. There are different levels of partnership and membership, the different levels of membership, the higher one that we are not, is based on number of employees and things like that, so. But we are partnered with them, and we do get free materials a lot of times through the, and trainings.
Our other, one of our other resources is to provide a safe shelter in keeping families local. And this is where the funding comes into play, keeping our shelter local. I know having, working with, with children in the community and working with families, making families aware of what's in this community, keeping it local, keeps the students local. It keeps the students in the schools, and I know Mr. Hunter referred to that. I have had students in that shelter with their, with their mother. And it is a great thing to know that that child can come to my building and not have to be in another school, uprooted, sent to a strange place. That child can come to school, be with an atmosphere that he or she is comfortable with, and continue their education, and not worry about what's happening with the grownups in the outside world. And that, that's something that's, that's extremely important for the child that's hugely involved in this situation. And without it being locally, you're uprooting that whole family and causing more problems than that's already there. Also, another thing that's there is just being familiar with the community, being familiar with the resources, you know, the families familiar with this community who was here. And, you know, you go beyond that, you, you start working with the community or with those family members of that person that's involved. And unfortunately, too many of us have had to be a part of that, have that in our families. And I know when you have to deal with distance, and you're trying to help a family member, and sometimes the only way you can help them is if they're in that shelter. And, you know, if you have a distance barrier there, that's, that could be, you know, a huge barrier that may not, you know, help you assist with another family member. So those are some of the things, and some of the high points to keep, you know, to try to keep the shelter local, to make sure that we can service the people in the community, you know, educate the community. I know New Directions needs to be out there, to make people aware of who we are. We're working on that. That's, we're all dedicated to do that. I had a staff retreat in August before starting school. I had New Directions speak to my teachers. They, you know, the students have done positive things to help fund New Directions. There's just a lot of positive promotion out there. We had brochures at New Directions. I have an area in my building where there's free material for all different things for parents. And I took quite a few pamphlets from New Directions, and they are, they're almost all gone. And that's a good thing that they're being picked up, it's also, it's very sweet, nothing somebody needs them. And that's, they're, there's a lot of them that have disappeared. And what I do like is that there's an option for, for a person that, I mean, this person now knows what's local because of the past, on experience. A lot of them did not know what was here and now because of us educating and providing this. And we can let these people know what city it can be, what the city's offering, what this board can do for them. And also, just, it, it goes beyond that, working with these parents, you know, help, teaching them to, you know, find their resources, get the things they need to help them, you know, help themselves, help their family, its extended stay. There's a lot of skills that can be taught through that center to keep that family from revisiting or from worse harm, so that we're not reading about them in the industry.
Another thing to consider, it's not just housing women and their families that we're all about. I've only been with the organization for one week, and in that time, I have known of three women who have contacted us and have wanted to know various, they, women answers to various questions that are troubling in their lives that have to do with domestic violence. Two of them set up appointments. One of them has already been in, and then the third one is talking about if she can figure out how to get in, and I, there's a lot of trauma involved in a woman making this, a decision to make these changes in her life. And sometimes it takes a lot of interaction with other people, and we want to be there for this woman as she goes through those steps. And there's so much more. I know Barbara has counseled with the one woman that has already come in and provided great resource information for her.
And so much of the time, we do think of the shelter, and New Directions is only that, the shelter, but it is so much more. We don't want to be full all the time. We hope we, we aren't full. But getting the awareness out and the education is the more important piece for the youth and, and the community, so that if and when someone has to make that decision, and it's probably the hardest decision they have to make, because they may have to walk out with their clothes on their back, and make sure that they can take their children with them, keep them safe, worry about pets. Is he going to murder the pet while they're gone? No, there's things we don't think about in that decision-making. It takes seven, between seven and fifteen times before they actually take that final step. And, you know, the ones that I, that I've talked to, she was going to come in, had the police involved, and is averaging one call a day through our local law enforcement. And they were ready, I was ready, she changed her mind, didn't surprise me at all. So it's not a matter of why didn't she leave? Why didn't she go, you know, why did she go back? She's working a job, why did she? And there's just a lot of decisions that those of us don't always have to make.
It looks like your organization's done, or New Directions has done quite a bit of reorganizing over the last year. What were some of the shortcomings, and how are you going to help that happen at this point forward?
I think the main shortcoming was just public awareness. And that's what we've, we've tried to get is, we're working on new board members, of course, our new executive director, getting a positive attitude out there, getting a positive approach, meeting people, working with people, working with these different entities, and just letting this community know who we are and what we're about. That's, that's our main thing. And hitting these different entities within the community. That's our goal. And just to have a group of, of board members that we have right now are, are very pro, you know, family and education. That, that's our goal.
And I, I think also, can't work anymore with other resources that are already here. We don't want to random, we don't, we don't want to do something that somebody else is already doing because they've already got it treated. But we also feel that there's some specific things to domestic violence that we maybe have more knowledge of than some others. We did some surveys at the health fairs this last year, because I, we wanted to know, what do people know about this? A couple of the things, first, they didn't think there was really a domestic violence problem indicator county. They didn't realize there was a shelter indicator county as an option. And they thought we only served the city of Greensburg a lot of times. Didn't think bullying was a form of domestic violence. So we learned a lot from that, and just being in the public at those health fairs. People came up and asked questions.
Another area that we plan to address is there are so many sources of funding that have been untapped, as far as national and state, and even corporations, that we really need to become active, and I plan to do that, to act, to seek other areas of funding. I mean, we don't want to lean on local organizations forever, because we realize that you guys have so many requests for your funding. But at this point, we aren't able to survive unless we have this year's support from you guys, as far as we can't fly on our own yet. We, we have enough funding for the next year, and we've got every, all of our bases covered for that. And thanks to the donation of counseling and her social work service, we've eliminated some expenses from our organization so that we can direct our funds appropriately. And we're going to expand the monies, if, if effort is part of the result anyway, we're missing everything possible, and I personally will, to get more funding so that we can expand our programming, expand our reach in the community, and our ability to serve citizens.
Well, you're requesting less this year than last year.
Because we have less staff at this point, and we, we felt like we took the necessary steps to try to help ourselves, and to have a lesser budget, and to do more with less, as we all do. And we hope to eventually be self-sufficient. And we hope that at this point, we are reorganizing, and as I confused our categories of our name, we hope to go in a new direction. And at that point, we just ask that you bear with us for potentially this coming year. We know we need to prove ourselves a little more to everybody, and we're willing to do that, and all of us on the board have committed to do that.
So when clients come in, who will be hosting? That will be directing them or counseling them, whatever?
The, the physical action of involving, you know, whether it's two in the morning or whatever that falls to be, and we have this wonderful core of volunteers who I also plan to expand, but we met with them last night. There's about a core of, of, enough to definitely keep the, their activities. They, they usually man the facility on the nighttime hours, and then I am there for them during the day when I'm working each day.
So if someone comes in at nighttime, then you will go back?
Yeah, we're, we're, I, I will go back for the initial process.
Maybe I can clarify a little bit, just because I'm currently doing a social work piece of that. Oftentimes, it's, I'll give you the example. Five o'clock, two weeks ago Sunday, got a call on my cell phone from an individual that, that was saying she feared that she was in danger, blah, blah, blah. So involved with police. I physically drove in from my home, went to the police department. They went out to see if she physically wanted to leave the household she was in. Would have brought her to where I was, I would've done an intake interview-
At the police-
At the police station for safety reasons, obviously. And then if she physically needed to go into the shelter, I would've physically gone to the shelter, put her in her situation there. And oftentimes, the first day, they simply sleep because they can, they don't have to have one eye open now. And then we call on volunteers. Jackie Elliott is our volunteer coordinator that we have put in place. And she is then going to be responsible for helping take all these phone calls to, okay, we need to cover this shift, we need to cover this shift, because it's a last-minute thing, obviously. You know, it's not a planned abuse.
Well, and we plan to cover, we plan to get enough volunteers so that we can have a monthly calendar, and a new that we know that if somebody comes in on the first Tuesday of the month, that's my shift, and-
And if nobody's in there, lucky them.
So we, we are trying to address those types of issues, but right now, we can and-
So how much training to do your volunteers, and who will be doing the training?
That issue came up last night. You probably know more about the training.
As I mentioned earlier, the Indiana Coalition Against Domestic Violence has trainings that are available. We have webinars that are available. We have actual training that are in like packet form, that kind of train the trainer kind of thing, so that either I or Jackie Elliott, we have the training that the people have had that are currently volunteers was from the previous executive director doing with them. And that would be ongoing as well. We have a training, it's packet, they have a volunteer packet, so that they know what's expected of them when they're coming in. We also have like a shadowing kind of a piece that goes with that. We don't just throw somebody in there and say, hey, answer the phone, and if they're in danger, you know, wait it. We actually have a list of questions if they answer the phone, what they can say and not say. They cannot say that there's, if somebody says, is my wife there, Suzie Smith? We don't rep, you know, we don't tell them yes or no. So there's nothing to say, because if you're real nervous about answering the phone, I want to see it. What am I supposed to say? So, so we do our best to make sure that, that there is a name for that answer to the question.
I got a couple, I got a question or two about funds, real quick, just because you're asking about funds and requests. I'm glad to hear that you're going to seek some other sources for that, but since you have had the reorganization, is there any focus on increasing your fundraisers, or reorganizing your fundraisers, things like that?
Well, definite reorganization and streamlining. I, there were a number of kind of small fundraisers last year, and then one larger with that walk-a-mile in their shoes. And it's our goal to streamline to probably two fundraising concepts and keep the walk-a-mile in their shoes, but really, really do it right. I mean, it takes just as much work to get a small number of people to turn out and a small number of people to get donations on your cause. It takes just as much work as if you really get the community engaged. And those kinds of things you do have to build. So we, we saw ways after last year's event, even right away, we knew of things that should have been done in a better way. And we are going to address that. And we've already got some volunteers that aren't even involved with the shelter work that are really interested in helping us improve those things so that they can make more money and be more effective.
So basically, doing fewer well. So basically, doing fewer well.
Your rent that you pay, is that for the year?
I don't know what you refer to.
Well, on your expenses, you say rent, fifty-eight hundred dollars.
Yeah, that's it.
That's annual, and you pay it?
Yeah, we do periodically have some persons that make a donation that earmarked to help with the rent. But basically, yes, that comes out of our...
Very expensive.
Yeah, we didn't have any time.
Okay.
And luckily, our landlord, we come up for a reevaluation, I think in March, and he has already said he's not planning to reorganize. We'll put that.
I have a question in regards to the letter that Judge Bailey and Westover has signed. They're anticipating a future of utilizing New Directions more. Why you have the council that you have, that they will be ordered to receive that council in front of you, right?
That's the batter's intervention program, which they, we make referrals, excuse me, referrals to.
Yeah, I've spoken with both judges, and I told them that we're interested if they see any kind of a need that they feel would be a niche for us, that not only this BIP program, the batter's intervention program, but anything else that might, they might be aware of by changes in the law, or even things that maybe weren't addressed before. And both of them have assured me that they will definitely want to partner with us if they see another need.
So, you know, they are going to be sending people to, you know, the batter cases?
Yes, because they obviously have domestic violence cases coming for them via a divorce situation, or other assault kinds of charges and things like that. And so they can order them into BIP program, either as a sentencing, as a deferred prosecution, as a condition of parole or probation, those kinds of things, and be held accountable. The BIP program is mostly for accountability of alleged perpetrators.
And the money that goes positive, you have to pay to, pardon me, you have to pay to do that, here, twenty-eight hundred dollars expenses.
Right. The two thousand eight hundred fifty was a request through the CAC program. We got two thousand. And part of that is geared toward the expenses that go toward the materials, the paying of the person that would be facilitating, and the training and the certification process that I spoke of earlier, because they have changed the law, they have, the judges can only refer to a certified BIP program. And one that Reverend Splitgate was not certified, but he didn't have.
And it's a twenty-six week program. It's an extensive program, and there's a lot of costs associated with that. Plus, if you multiply that out, you know, by how many participate, since we anticipate having, it becomes a big number. And speaking of numbers, there are about four statistics that I'd like to share quickly. One in four women has experienced domestic violence in their lifetime. In Greensburg, Decatur County, there's one domestic violence situation recorded on the average of one every day. So there's an average of one a day. And with the economic situations in this town, the most recent data I could find was from the two thousand census, and it shows the median household income in Decatur County is forty thousand four hundred and one. And there's a national statistic that people with annual incomes under fifty thousand are at three times higher risk of intimate partner violence than people with incomes over that amount. So the average, the median income for a household in Decatur County was approximately forty thousand. And they're saying that in areas such as ours, where incomes are fifty thousand or less, that you're three times higher at risk for domestic violence. And also, seventy percent of Americans know someone who is or has been a victim of domestic violence. So that's a huge statistic. And it also says, studies have shown that access to sheltered services leads to a sixty to seventy percent reduction in incidence and even in severity of reassault during the following twelve months following the person being in the shelter. It's a higher result than if they had been, if there was a court order against the individual or there was law enforcement protection involved. The results of having the woman in a shelter produce a sixty to seventy percent reduction in re-incident deaths.
And how many clients did you have this past year?
The number of clients, we do have the data on that. See who can find theirs first.
We don't have any of that information.
Two thousand and ten, there were seven adults, six children, there were a hundred and eighty-four shelter days. And in two thousand and nine, there were only seventy-nine shelter days. That basically means that we banned somebody being in there for a hundred and eighty-four days in two thousand and ten.
Do you have any numbers on the council?
I'm sorry?
Do you have any numbers on the council, numbers of council people?
As far as, I mean, well, we've, I've got outreach services, being support, and advocacy, transportation, dropping charges, helping with prosecutors, parent and child services in court. And those aren't total, we've got sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty-one, twenty-seven, looks like twenty-seven that she's got listed here as far as how she's got these written down. And then there are referrals that we also made to human services, the trustee, homeless information. I had one of those the other day. They thought we were homeless shelter. And so, which, you know, I gave them this information as best I could.
Forty-three referrals?
Yeah, forty-three referrals.
So about seventy non-sheltered.
Volunteer hours for two thousand and ten was six hundred and twenty-six hours just sheltered about. That doesn't count presentations in school systems, organizations, you know, all the other.
And now your volunteers would do that?
Volunteers?
Or give information in the school systems, you said?
I'm sorry?
The programs in schools and so forth, you're saying?
No, they could.
Okay.
They're able to do presentations, but the executive director was doing the presentations.
And those, in a six-month name, is going to reach just under a thousand students this year.
I'm going to start to wind this down, but I think what we should do while these people are still here, probably go to their meeting, is to have a follow-up for them to return at the February meeting, in case there's any more questions.
Okay. I think probably we would all like to know a little background, Diane, you know, because all we've heard, we have a new director. It wasn't anything that she had social work, she, you know, licensed and so forth, whatever her background is.
And you watch out at the next meeting.
If you can get it now, that'd be great. Just a little synopsis.
Well, I do not have a background in social work, and if you, if you call the various agencies around in the state, executive directors typically do not have that background. It would be like, for a number of years, I was an executive director for the Arts Council. I am not an artist, but I was able to do that. And I, it will be my responsibility, along with the board, to find those pieces that are needed for the organization. And social case workers is one of those people, or one of the persons that we'll need. And hopefully, down the road, we can have all kinds of additional staff down the road. But for now, with the funds that are available and the things that need the most work, it is definitely an executive director decision.
Which is why we had to downsize the case manager position. And luckily, for me or for them, whichever, I am a licensed social worker, and I happen to be on the board, so I am volunteering my expertise, as has the board, in other ways, and I'm not getting a penny. So as long as they're needing me, I will do that. If we have something available to hire a part-time as-needed counselor, someone coming into the shelter, that's what we'd like to be able to get back to. And that was one of our harder decisions this year.
Anything else from the council?
Thank you.
All right, Diane Robb, thank you very much, and we'll see you next month. Next on the agenda is Big Brothers and Big Sisters.
We, you are, I'm sorry. My name, I'm sorry. I'm Beth Kersey.
I know, most of you.
We know you, Beth.
I can't.
We need to have it on the recording.
I'm Beth Kersey, I'm director of Big Brothers and Big Sisters. And we, our agency this year has, as you're telling, I'm from Madison Grace, we have had a lot of kids coming into the program that are desperately in need of someone to guide them, to give them some support. They, they are kids that, that, you know, these mentors are seeing when we match the kids. The kids, first of all, just the kids are ages six to eighteen, and they are primarily from single-parent homes. They are, like I said, they're kids that have this ongoing need for somebody in their life just to show, guide them, and to show them the right direction. We've had a number of kids, teachers, that are telling us, we have programs that are in schools. We are in all of the schools, North and South Decatur, as well as Greensburg Elementary, Dan Saint Mary's. We have mentors come and have lunch with the kids every once a week. And I, all these mentors are telling us they cannot believe how much that they feel needed when they meet with these kids. Just to give you a couple examples of the things that the kids, we had two, a brother and a sister. One girl, they came, the girl came to school with her hair dyed totally, all these crazy colors. And the big brother asked the brother, he said, oh, why didn't you dye your hair like your sister? You know, I do that. He said, because I knew you wouldn't like it. These are things that, you know, it's just these little things that they're showing that they, you know, that they, they are making a difference. We have a number of high school students that come over, we please to meet at lunch as well with the kids, play games, they let the kids talk. I had a big sister the other day say, this little girl just told me some things that are happening at her house. I'm really worried about her. These are the heads-up things that we get through our mentors. The kids are all feeling comfortable, they're opening up to the volunteers, and then we can help them in home situations when we find out these things. We are helping family members. We, the family that received, had a tap for family this year, was one of our families from Big Brothers and Big Sisters. It's real, we are, we help in, you know, with these families, like expanding and getting help through other agencies for them, besides just the volunteers and for the kids. Teachers, teachers are telling us weekly, thank you so much for being here. One teacher told me, called me up the other night and said, you have no idea what you've done for my student. I will do whatever I can to help you because I see it firsthand. We are helping in reducing the drug and alcohol abuse as well as violence. Mentors talking to the kids are definitely making a difference. And we have right now over two hundred and fifty youth in our program. The high school students that we have are, we have probably about eighty of high school, North Decatur High School students going to the North Elementary, and Greensburg High School students also coming over. I've listened for you in the presentation that the proposal I have given to you that you can see the success that we're getting as far as the different percentages of our self-confidence, academic performance. You know, when the kids get closed lunch, and the mentors come, and they say, where's my, where's my lunch partner today? Well, he has closed lunch. Okay, well, this happens, he'll say, he'll go to the office, and he'll be, he'll get to eat half lunch with that little guy. And there's mainly been the little boys that are, with him, be able to have closed lunch with them. Next week he comes, the little guy still has closed lunch, talks to him. Okay, this happened at the beginning of the school year. Twice that happened. That little boy has not been in closed lunch for the rest of his school year, and when Matthew came this time, it was like, oh my, it's been after Christmas, what's going to happen? Nope, he was right there. He said, I'm not going to get closed lunch because I want to have lunch with you instead of sitting in the room by myself. We have increased our numbers, as I said, in the proposal by fifty-four percent, which is quite good. And we have, you know, like I said, we have, we have right now fifty-one children on our waiting list that we, that still need someone, and we're working hard to try to find. There are more and more kids in Greensburg and Decatur County that need someone. We need to continue these programs. We need to, we need to work with these kids all the time. We need, especially during, as far as even in summer, giving them programs during the summer so that, allowing them to go to the swimming pool to alleviate tension that is in the home and escalates during those hot summer months. These are things that we do for the kids to try to help.
I have a couple questions about the budget. One, I guess, it's the same question I had last year, is I don't understand how you can budget a deficit. So what are your plans to make up the difference? We've got more expenses than you do revenue in your budget. What are the plans?
Well, as you can see, our salaries have actually budgeted down. Actually, we took a step last, last year to, it takes six weeks, I believe, where our staff took at least one day off every week to alleviate some salaries, that would save expense. And really fortunately, if you look at two thousand and ten, the contributions of sixteen thousand, two thirty, that was really just an anomaly. We were just really fortunate to receive some contributions from the Bay Club and other organizations that did some fundraising for us and donated those funds. So if you look at that, we're really at a zero, zero balance for the year for two thousand and ten. And with the way things are going right now, we had some perennial sponsors for a whole for kids sake that year after year have generously donated sponsorship dollars, but this year just has said, no, thank you, not right now. So that's why we budgeted such a low number of fifty thousand for a whole for kids sake, because that does account for sixty to seventy percent of our budget.
I guess the next question I was going to ask, right along the same lines, is, you know, you had the car show, you show a profit of twenty-two hundred dollars in '08, and it dropped significantly the next year, and now you're not doing that. So are you putting some other fundraisers in place to compensate?
We're actually, you came up, we had a, actually a fundraising committee meeting earlier, about midway through two thousand and ten, and we're going to try to start a three K or a five K run around the July 4th time frame. So that's something that's in the works, and hopefully we can get that started. This will be the first year for that. And hopefully, we'll be able to continue that and make it larger and make up for that car show, because obviously, the car show has not materialized like we thought it would.
What were the contributions? You're really down in, from two thousand and ten, that you're not getting, what were some of those contributions?
The Bay Club.
Because you're only projecting fifteen hundred dollars, and you had sixteen thousand to add in last year. So you have a lot of those various organizations, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, we were just very fortunate, a lot of those other nonprofit organizations had fundraisers themselves, and then the donor did that too. So we don't anticipate that every year, so we...
So you dropped it.
We do.
Some of your other sources of income that you are trying this year are what?
Well, mainly the whole for kids sake, of course.
And what else?
Seven thousand, like a five K run.
And?
United Fund, we applied for grants from there.
Like your State Grace, also, the Department of Services.
Did I also see emails and internet that... Did I also see emails and internet that you, with you, in conjunction with your bowl for kids sake, that you're working with investors?
Yes, time for kids sake, yes. That would be the week leading up to the bowl for kids sake.
What is that?
That is where each day is a lot of the restaurant has donated a certain percentage of the proceeds that particular day depending on the restaurant. It's different for each restaurant, of course. And if anyone goes to that particular restaurant and say Pizza King, that's the first day and they say bowl for kids sake, I'd like to donate my annual proceeds to bowl for kids sake, they'll take twenty percent, I believe, that right for Pizza King, twenty percent. They'll then make twenty percent of that bill to bowl for kids sake.
So we also had our wishing wells that we threw out at the first location. And we started this year in May and that looking at our budget in terms of memory and between. Since then, we raised.
A couple thousand dollars.
Three thousand dollars from the, from the end of May.
That was actually just started with one big wishing well on the Harvins. It's a role of corporate sponsor, Big Brother, Big Sisters. And a lot of the board members got together and thought it was a good idea to buy smaller wishing wells and approach some of the local businesses and ask if you could put those down for change. And that's the only one over there.
You've got a lot of good people on the floor here, surely. You guys have come up with some different ideas here. I mean, just like you're doing now, it's a five K run and it's probably a big kick because I don't think there's anything like that here.
Yeah, not, not for the whole.
It's probably good, so. Keep plugging away on your, on your, when you get your donations and working on those because that, any kick counts.
I have a question. On what has group accomplished this year? Can you give some statistics? How did you come about the statistics? Sixty percent improvement in self-confidence and improved academic performance. How did you gather that information?
Okay. Are we, at the end of the...